We have.
Dopes would show up, argue about the same thing for two hours.
Clarity for everybody. Everybody can see, I think, part of, part of the issue here is, you know, Worce Towns got their pot of money, Emptill's got their pot of money, and Eastby's got their pot of money, and nobody wants, you know, really wants to disclose where it's going or what's, what's doing. And I think we need to, we need to come to a place where, where it's available to everybody to see, because we're all in this together.
That's right. That's why that name's.
We can talk about that while I mean.
I have seven o'clock. Are you guys ready?
Yep, everybody. Everybody ready? Evening. I'd like to start tonight's meeting by reading an opening message. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone. After speaking, please mute your microphone. East Emphil Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about an agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during public comment period for those non-agenda items. All comments should be directed to the board. We will now move to our first agenda item. Please join me for a moment of silence, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So up first, we have the consent agenda. Is there any board comment on the consent agenda?
I have a question. It looks like Sergeant Lombardo is representing our police force this evening. There's a large number, 200-plus hours of overtime for the month of January. I'm wondering if there is a particular reason for that amount of overtime.
So I don't think Officer Lombardo is representing the, the Police Department, Ms. Lefever.
Well, very well. I don't see the chief, and I don't see anyone else, so.
I could probably answer that for you.
Very well.
It's possible, it's probable that we did leave, had one officer leave, and we had at least one or two other officers out on medical.
Okay.
And probably three out on medical. And then we were going in and out with the COVID issue.
Okay, very well. So we can tag it as COVID for the most part.
For the most part, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other comments?
I will be abstaining.
Okay. And there was a note on the minutes that there was a erroneous sentence that wasn't supposed to be in the minutes, which was deleted.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Lefever, second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And one abstention.
So motion passes four, zero, with one abstention. Up next, we have, under action items, Little Conestoga Watershed Alliance Grant Award. Mrs. Schweitzer.
Mr. Huber is here, and he can probably explain. This was before you, a number of months ago, before grant. Mr. Huber, if you could use the microphones, that would be great. We're at the point now, they were awarded the grant, it was $113,000, and they're moving through the process of the grant documents, and they need some documentation for the landowner. I think Diane is going to put up a graphic that kind of shows you and reminds you of what was being, or what is being done.
Yeah, I wanted to personally thank the board for your support. You've certainly played a key role in us being awarded this, this Growing Greener Grant. And without your support, we, we couldn't have, we wouldn't have been awarded this. So, thank you very much. And the next step is, we were awarded the grant, but I guess the official process with DEP is you have to fill out a number of different documents, one which is landowner agreements. And so each of the landowners that are part of the scope of the work, we're asking to, to sign an agreement. And just one point of clarification, DEP does require an operations, maintenance, and repair plan, which is attached to this agreement. But it's a little deceiving, because this is actually, this grant is only for design and permitting. So technically, there's really, until the design is done, there's not really going to be a operations, a final operations, maintenance, and repair plan. So, but they still require it to be part of the agreement. So that's, that's why it's there. But at this point, you wouldn't have any responsibility for, for, for that.
Any questions from the board? Any discussion of the board?
Good to see the project moving forward.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Any on Zoom? Okay. We're hearing none. Is there a motion to authorize board signature on the landowner, excuse me, for the signature on the landowner agreement for the Wheatland Hills Park property at 1525 Conestoga Boulevard?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Up next, Schreiber Pediatrics, waiver of preliminary plan.
I think there's a couple of graphics that Mr. Cooley has. Need a second screen.
One would you like first?
I'm sorry, the sketch plan.
Hi, good evening. Brian Cooley with DC Gun Associates, representing Schreiber Pediatric. I'm here tonight for the sketch plan and the waiver request of the preliminary plan. I'll just go over a brief presentation, answer any questions that the board has. Just to orient the board, on the site plan on the, on the screen, to the north is Good Drive. On the south side is Community Way. Schreiber Pediatric is proposing a 15,000 square foot building addition. It'll be 3,000, or I'm sorry, it'll be three stories, 5,000 square feet each. The building addition you can see is just to the north of the existing building, so it'd be between the existing building and Good Drive. Currently, there's, there's 125 parking spaces. You can see on the right-hand side of the project that there's a proposed parking expansion. That'll bring the total to 161 parking spaces. In addition, there is a proposed sidewalk, which leads from the existing parking to the proposed building addition. And the site is served by public and sewer and water, and that will continue. We did receive zoning hearing board decision on October 21st for the building expansion. We do have the David Miller letter, which is dated January 27th, and they recommend approval of the modification request. In addition, we did attend the planning commission meeting last week, and the planning commission also recommended the modification request for the preliminary plan. There are a couple renderings I'd like to share with the board, just to show the proposed expansion. Diane, can you bring up, I think it's called the main entrance?
Well, that's occurring. What's the impervious coverage calculation result?
I believe that was on, on the sketch plan.
We can't read them.
Yeah, if we can zoom into it, I don't have it jotted down here.
Okay. Just like to know that, please.
Okay.
I did, I think it's
Thirty-nine percent.
Thirty-nine percent. Lot coverage 120,000.
Lot coverage.
Roughly square feet.
So, Mr. Lefever.
Yes.
The existing lot coverage is 100,027 square feet, which is 32%. The proposed lot coverage is 120,710 square feet, which puts them at 39%.
Thank you.
Maximum is 70%.
Yes.
Good shape.
Deceiving.
Yeah, so this shows the proposed sidewalk from the existing parking lot. The existing Schreiber building is on the left-hand side. That's the one-story building. You can see on the right-hand side would be that three-story addition to, which would be adjacent to the existing building. And Diane's other one, there's just one other one of the courtyard in the back. And then this would be between the stormwater basin and the existing and proposed building. There's an outside therapy garden, which would be part of this project as well. That's approximately 1,700 square feet toward the back. So that kind of gives the board a sense of the century garden, as well as the elevation of the proposed building expansion. Are there any other questions for myself related to the sketch plan or the waiver request?
Anyone from the board?
Nope.
Ms. Lefever?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else? Mr. Hane?
No.
Any discussion from the board? Any discussion or comments from the audience? Good. Well, what's your pleasure? Is there a motion to waive the preliminary plan requirement for Schreider Pediatrics Township Plan 058403?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lefever. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Emergency operation plan?
All right, you should have received from Mrs. Schweitzer last week a copy of the emergency operations plan, which is a confidential document that is not available for right-to-know requests and otherwise. PMA Directive 2018-01 requires us to re-promulgate our required emergency operations plan for the municipality when there are significant changes made to the document, or when there are significant changes to the board members who originally adopted the EOP. Now, we have had multiple different iterations of the EOP over the years. In 2013, we adopted a new and updated version of the EOP, and that is the version that we continue to use. However, there were updates to some of the legal documents that it refers back to, as well as some updates needed with the census and the addition of the hospital and other things moving forward. Second, we updated the notification and resource manual, which is a document that includes contact information and specific resources for the municipality and associated stakeholders. So it includes our police, fire, and EMS, the school district, churches, nursing homes, healthcare facilities, et cetera. And in order to make that document more functional in true emergency situations, we created a joint notification and resource manual for the two municipalities, since the chief fire official and myself both serve both municipalities, and because so many of the stakeholders impact both municipalities, and so many of our incidents impact both, it was easier to keep one 17-page document updated, rather than to continue to try to update two documents. So you have a promulgation page to sign this evening, if you so choose, and a resolution to pass that would allow for the new emergency operations plan version dated February 11th, as well as the notification and resource manual joint for East Emphil Township and East Petersburg Borough, to be passed on to Lancaster County Emergency Management, and from there to PMA headquarters, as is required by PMA Directive 2018-01.
Any questions? Any comments?
I wasn't sure. Did it, did we change it, or did we have board members that changed? What was the trigger mechanism?
The mechanism that triggered this update were changes to the EOP and the significant combining of the notification and resource manual, making it joint between the two municipalities.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the audience? Any from Zoom? All right. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 202206, re-promulgating the emergency operations plan?
So moved.
Was that Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Old Worce Town Road Bridge Replacement Project.
So we have a little bit of movement forward to get this accomplished. We're still hoping to bid this project this year. This is an agreement before you, between PP&amp;L and the township, to move poles that are in the way of the improvements that are being done. The cost that you're committing to is $88,959.63, of which 2.5% will be the township's responsibility.
Any comments? Any discussion from the board?
I saw additional invoicing in, in January from McCormick Taylor. Is that still within the agreed to parameters of their agreement, or is this causing extra?
No, as modified, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Mr. Rupp, if you could come to the microphone?
Did you say PP&amp;L is going to charge 88,000 to do this?
Correct. That's 28.57% of the total cost to them. So the total cost is quite a bit more. I don't know if that's listed.
These are high.
Three hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
These are high tower poles, I believe.
Their poles are not towers.
Oh.
But there's several of them.
Utilities?
Utilities.
Sir Rupp, it costs $25,000 a utility pole, just to move it.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, that number adds up pretty quick. Well, you can use the math right there. Well, no, it was more than that.
It's.
There was 300,000. 300,000. That's a starting point, right? 300?
311,000 is what the total cost is to move the poles.
Twelve, around 12. Let's call it 12. 12 poles. Okay, now we're paying.
We're paying 2.5% of 88, 89,000.
Oh, who's paying the rest?
The state.
Oh.
And a little bit from Mannheim.
All right, thank you. What? You're paying, you're paying the rest. Somewhere along the line, right?
Any other questions? Anyone from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to authorize signature on the agreement between PP&amp;L and the township concerning the relocation of poles in connection with the Old Worce Town Road Bridge Replacement Project?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Centerville Road Widening Project.
So we're moving to the Centerville Road Widening Project, getting ready to bid that project also this year. The, we ran into an issue as we were concluding our right-of-way clearance. The right-of-way that was actually outlined in the original proposal was 1.5 million. We exceeded that number, and so we had to go back to reprogram it. While they were reprogramming it, they also looked at the construction costs, so that's been also increased. So what you had before you is the agreement, or the addendum to the reimbursement agreement, that reflects those higher costs. So now we're looking at 3.86 million as the township's responsibility.
And it was.
Nineteen million dollar project. I knew you were going to ask me that. It was over 3 million. I'm thinking it was 3.2 was our commitment, and now it's 3.8.
So roughly a $600,000 increase.
Correct.
Okay.
When you have 7% inflation, now you're seeing the numbers in construction.
I'm honestly surprised it's not more.
Right, and once we get the bid number, and who knows what will happen there, but.
Yeah, and engineering firms right now are doing exactly what everybody's inflating their cost estimates, because they all know what's going to happen with the spring bid coming up. And most are doing 7% to 10% increases over last year. Cost of doing business in our new economics.
Any other comments or questions?
Just so it'd be good for us with our next finance admin meeting, now starting to look at the big picture, how we're going to fund our projects. So we just have to have the discussion when, when somebody can schedule it.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody from the audience? Anyone from Zoom? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2207, which authorizes the signature on acceptance letter for Amendment Two for the Centerville Road Widening Project?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Lefever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, up next, it looks like we have the Centerville Road Norfolk Southern Agreement.
So with the road widening, we also have to widen the roadway, or the railway that crosses Centerville Road. That's a separate agreement between us and Norfolk Southern. The cost on that one is $759,000, $759,000 and 120.
I like the first number better.
You know what I mean. 759,000, round numbers. Of that, 759,000, our responsibility is 152,000, which is 20%. But this is an agreement that we have to be signed before Norfolk Southern will lift their pencils.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Well, that'll get the whole crossing fixed, I'm sure.
I hope.
Actually, it'd be, in all honesty, it's kind of, when we get done this Centerville Road project, it's going to be even nicer than the State Road Air and Change, once all said and done. And the State Road Air and Change was a big success. This is long overdue to have this project at this point.
Any comments or questions from the audience? Any from Zoom? Is there a motion to authorize signature on the agreement between AECOM Norfolk Southern Railway, Railway, and the township, which provides for payment to AECOM concerning the rail line widening? A motion from Mr. Bennett. Is there a second? Second from the chair. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, board goals. So I took a look over, and hopefully everybody got this in their packet. I made some comments. I thought we could go through and discuss each working group. See if we can come up with a consensus on what we have here. If we're going to add anything or change it. So admin and finance, I'll start off. I looked at item number seven. Seems more like a policy than a goal. Do we need it there or not? Number eight. In my mind, the way it's worded there, just, I'd like to see that our fee schedule covers costs. And I don't want to see us making money on the fees. That's just my take. Item 11. I understand, but is that a goal, or is that more of a policy? Item 13, are we done with refreshing the township website?
That's always ongoing, but we did move from one carrier to the other, yes.
I mean, is that something that can be taken off the list? And number 14, I think we're in the process of doing that, so we can take that off the list. And I didn't know what role we play in item number 15, so maybe comment on any of those.
I don't know. It's been a couple years. We talked about the employee forms at this point, so.
We have a form that, that works for me, for the department heads. I, I think we're done. Might need some tweaks as we move along.
Probably could take that one off, then. I do, since we don't have adopted policies, I do like leaving the I do, since we don't have adopted policies, I do like leaving the two on there that the Finance and Admin is responsible for, at least keeping the, the checks and balances on, which you add to Mr. Rigg's worth.
What number?
Uh, that would be seven and 11.
Okay, what about eight?
I think that was seven and 10.
And eight, enhanced revenue potentials. We should get in the habit of looking at all of our, I mean, that's part of finance, that should be something that's automatically something we do every year, we look at. So if there's anything that changes fee schedule-wise or something like that, or telecom or whatever it might be, it should be something that gets discussed in the working group. So I think that's kind of like an ongoing goal.
Yeah.
Maybe instead of using the word enhance, it'd probably be better to monitor.
I like that word better. How about refreshing the township website, is that one that can be removed?
As far as I'm concerned, yes.
Not really a goal, it seems like it's something that just has to be done as a daily course for a course of running township almost.
I think one, kind of like we talked about, and maybe the from a township website perspective, what a lot happens is you make an improvement to the website that everybody forgets about, and it quickly starts becoming stale. So I think maybe it's, there should be a goal more along the lines that we just keep it up to date. Whether that translates into an admin finance goal or whatever, but it's, it's something, just like we talked about our complaint, other things, if you let off the gas on something like that, then they quickly become outdated.
So for me, I, my mind doesn't work in engineer mind, so not meant to be a slide to any of the engineers here. But simpler is better, and for me, like 15 goals is an awful lot for one committee. I'd just like to see if we can pare it down, get it to something that's manageable, and, you know, we can look back and, and say, you know, we got most of these done.
I have no problem with taking the township website one off, just as long as we keep it up to date.
Okay. Did anyone else have anything under Admin and Finance?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
The only thing that I, I think maybe in the long term, we should perhaps look at would be having someone, I think we do have someone responsible for IT, things like the website, things like our computer system. Not looking to hire somebody new, but I think someone more clearly designated within the organization. I know Nate does a lot of it, we outsource a lot of it. I think, you know, have we gotten to the point where, and I, and I have no idea what outsourcing is costing the, the township, but have we reached the point where it would be better to have someone rather than outsourcing? Just something to consider. I don't know, I don't know about making it a goal, but it's just a thought.
Maybe we could establish a technology committee.
Please don't.
Okay.
I, I think we're getting to the point and the size. Right now, we share the duties of updating the website and the, and next door and all those things. Possibly an information officer or community information person. Those job duties, types of things. So, that's something worth looking at. IT. It's possible.
Well, if you want my opinion, we're not big in, I, I have a 250-person company that has an IT department, and sometimes I wonder why we don't outsource for a bigger company like that. It's very specialized, and if you don't keep up to date with it, and most people just outsource it now, even bigger companies.
It just constantly changes, and yeah.
It's hard to stay up to date with it, and when you have your own internal IT department, they quickly start falling behind. And then we bring on consultants to help keep them up to date, and you, makes you scratch your head as to why you have an IT department. Just saying.
Anything else? Okay. So Parks and Rec is the next one on our list. For me, under item number one, I would like to see us transition more of the operations and the funding and responsibility of the golf course to the authority. I don't want to micromanage that, but I, I do think that should be a goal.
Just to expand upon it, one, the authority was, has two operating agreements that still have yet to be executed, which I think would be something that should be a, a, a goal for the next year. One is how employees get handled and transferred. The second one's actual property. And I think it'd be good to get into those discussions at this point, now that we got the blue collar thing operating.
Meeting's been scheduled.
Yeah, ju- just as an FYI, we, we are working on that right now.
Okay.
And we're, we're actually have a meeting scheduled, I think, next week with Frank. Where we're going to review those two issues there, along with a, a third issue, so to your point, that's exactly the direction we're moving, so it is a, a good goal.
Okay. Great.
Point of order, we should be using the machine that provided at our places, which has some updated information in it from what was in the packet.
Yeah, the document that's on your table reflects the comments I received from Andy, Tom, and myself.
I did not know that, I've been using what's on the screen.
It's the same thing.
Okay.
It's the same thing.
Gotcha.
But I, I think you, the screens didn't show the changes the last time, so I wanted to make sure.
So the changes are in red?
Yes.
But what we have is just in black, is that?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Under that, Parks and Recreation are four and seven, pretty much the same thing, with having to do with HARC. Managing parks and also synergies between HARC and the township.
Good point. I agree.
Well, in my understanding, the HARC managing the course was a question that arose as for the feasibility of HARC doing that, rather than as much township management, I guess it's, in my mind, it's still an open question. So it can be addressed or considered here for its merits. I think that number seven varies in that extent a little bit from for understand what Mr. Weaver is saying, though, there is, does appear some redundancy there.
Just, just a little background on the, the synergies between HARC, the township, and the Recreation Authority. The Recreation Authority is the entity that is, that ultimately we want to be managing the golf course. HARC won't really have any role in that. At least as we see, see it right now. We're also, we've also discussed the possibility of HARC working with the township at our recreation facilities, either provide, either providing activities as they do in the summertime, or providing maintenance in many of our parks as they do for West Hemfield, so so they won't be involved with the, with, with the golf course, and there's no plan to have them involved with the golf course, at least at this point. So I think you can combine four and seven into one somehow. Because we basically are saying the same thing. I mean, my recommendation was, was to remove the, the three-word, the golf course off of that objective. And with, with that removal, it is very similar to seven, so I think we could combine the two.
Okay. The one question I do have is under item number six. Create a community citizen outreach advisory group to assist in improving park recreation trails in the township. So right off the bat, for me, that raised a concern. Do we have a group that's just telling us that we want this, we want that? We don't have any way to pay for it, but we want it. Or are we going to have a group that's going to be responsible for determining how we're going to get it? Not just what we want. So what's the vision?
Okay. Right now, we have a number of groups that have, that have approached us and are going to approach us for a stake in the recreation activity and facilities that we provide as, as a township. Generally, when someone comes to us with a request, we have I mean, after they make the request, well, the next question is how, how are you, are you going to pay for it, or you know, we may be able to help you, but you know, it's, it's really in the community's best interest to have the organization provide the, at least the initial funding. So we do have more and more of that type of thing going on. Rather than I think ad hoc meetings. I think, you know, one, we don't get, we don't get many opportunities where the residents can come with requests or interest they have in, in recreation. I just think, I think once a year, you know, it would be good to at least put it out there to, to the community, if you have a need or a situation or something that you'd like to see in the park. I'll give you a good example, we have, I, I believe we have a pretty good number of bike riders in the township, and I don't see or hear much from them. And maybe that's good, maybe that's bad, but it would be somewhere where they could get, would be a meeting where they could go if they do have an issue, or something that they would like to see us involved with. Or if someone has an idea about you know, something new in a park. You know, we, we've been approached about a dog park somewhere in the township. So just be in a, just be an opportunity for people to to air things out and present some ideas. Rather than all the ideas sort of percolating up from here.
So Tom, would it be something that the Park and Recs Committee could advertise and just have a special meeting themselves?
Exactly, that's exactly what I'm.
Rather than forming its own, rather than forming another working group outside of the
Right, we don't, we don't, yeah. You know, typically, we have groups coming to us, yeah, I we don't necessarily need an advisory group, but we do need some, I think some mechanism to be more open about what's going on in our parks and recreation system.
So if I could summarize, if I hear what you're saying, I think you want to engage the community, maybe on a yearly basis about Parks and Rec. So that, I have no issue with this, but.
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, the other goal is update the master plan. And we did that with our official map, which had the transportation elements and all that, and had a number of public meetings, and we did that with a, or park official map. Why don't we just make this a standing agenda item once a year? Where we update, we present, or update official map, and we get community input. And we advertise, and we do all that thing, we have all five board members. And just like we've done in the past AR Park, where we had all that community input, and we talked about the official maps, that could be at least a mechanism for having a conversation and talking. And it would be in a controlled environment, and doesn't create another, another meet, set of meetings for staff and everybody else to have to attend, we can just do it as part of our meeting, maybe start our meeting an hour early. And, and just go through that and, and update that, and then we go that way, and that way we get the input like we did with AR Park, so.
Awesome, I think that's a great idea, and we do have a township map that lays out our
We just, and you have a goal right now, you have a goal right now to expand into the, the work in our other parks, so it could be kill two birds with one stone.
Right.
In fewer words, I believe in having a plan, managing and controlling the plan. And having input with more thoughts can come up with a better plan, and then we can manage how it's implemented over time.
So if I heard everybody there, we would basically set aside a meeting a year, which we are going to devote time to our Parks and Rec, the updated master park plan, getting input from the residents on that, is that correct? Okay. Ms. White, sir, did you grasp that under item number six?
Sure, annual meeting to look at official map to gather resident input.
Perfect.
I also would like to emphasize Mr. Bennett's contribution about getting Noel Durham, yeah, Doorwork Park going with I, I envision a project on a smaller scale to what we did here in the front yard a few years ago. And without a covered bridge, but nonetheless, I think something like that in that part of the township would be a, a plus.
I, you do got Rotary interested in doing a project, so.
Anything else under Park and Recs? So next, planning and development.
The only thing I would ask, item number six, just working with the NPO and the PennDOT stuff. To be honest, the reason that was in planning development was because that was something I was, that was a working group I was in. Um, as my personal projects for the township is the PennDOT work in the township. And so I would just ask that that get moved to where the two engineers are currently sitting, which is in Public Works at this point. And then we can keep promoting those PennDOT projects. So, that everybody's okay with that comment?
Yeah, I certainly have no problem.
And you can dust off, doing stormwater work and that kind of stuff to go on and heavy with PennDOT.
All right, so that'll move over to Public Works. Anything else with planning?
Well, I understand the slow development process idea, but I don't know if the wording, I think our development community would not really agree with that. It's a different way to say that, maybe?
Well, I, I, I'd agree, we could probably come up with something better, but the, the the traffic and roadway considerations, I mean, based on, you know, even, even tonight, the, the traffic. I mean, we're seeing more, more and more of it, and I'd like to see us take a harder look at that angle of development in the township. Things that are going to really impact traffic. I, I think one of the things that perhaps we don't do enough of is post-development analysis when it comes to, to traffic. Maybe we do, maybe we don't, I don't know, I don't know that we do, but I think we should be doing it.
So, Mr. Weaver, I agree, and I didn't unfortunately get this version of the document until we're just here now, so I just now call it two and three. As well.
We say allow time in the development process for proper evaluation of traffic, et cetera.
Free and post.
But what does post do?
I don't want to wordsmith it, but I just, I didn't, just kind of caught my eye there.
But there's nothing else. It, it confirms that what the analysis that what the analysis presented at the beginning of the development process happened at the end. I think we owe it to the, owe it to the community. If we, if we, if somehow we miss on the traffic, and I'm not suggesting that we have, but we don't, you know, we don't know. All, all, you know, for instance, Stony Battery Road we have coming up here, we're gonna have a significant amount of truck traffic. We've seen analysis that we're gonna be okay. And hopefully, we will be, but we won't, we don't, we won't know that for sure until we go back and take a look. And then that will either allow us to develop additional tracks on Stony Battery Road because we have the capacity or it'll, it'll slow it down as it, as it should if the information post is giving us a warning sign of some type, we'll get more traffic.
I mean, I agree with the concept, I think that makes sense. It's just more the wording of it, I thought.
So, I don't have a problem with the concept, but I just want to just throw up a challenge flag and just think of the practicality of, we're gonna do it on every project. One, the one you just mentioned, we split with the neighbor, right, West Hemfield Township's on the other side of that. We cannot control what they do. So, you know, we have a project, they have a project. You know, how do we say what's theirs, what's ours? Who's involved, who does what, just?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I don't know how we determine that. All, all I know, all I want to know is, is, is the information that we use to approve a project, traffic information. Is it accurate? And what happened after it's finished? Is, you know, the, the analysis is still okay.
So, for me, I, I like to solve problems. Is there an example of something that we've done that has come up that's driving this narrative here now?
Let me ask one question to Scott Hay. What is in our ordinance right now related to any post-studies, whether it's economics or traffic or whatever?
The, the post-studies for something like traffic are a little difficult and the ordinance doesn't require those at, at this point. I mean, an applicant, as far as post, like with stormwater, they go back and make sure what was built was right. Not necessarily, I guess, how it's functioning, just that it was built to match the original, the original design.
But we don't go back and evaluate storms, density of, so as after the fact.
Not the actual function of them, whether they match the design or not, which in a traffic situation, you would make sure the lanes are there, the signals there, whatever. Whatever was part of the, the design that was, that was approved. What we've seen occasionally as part of some conditional uses, there are conditions added on where you may have to check that traffic afterwards. If, if the initial generator is sort of unknown, we had a project with, with a, a very large distributor of e-commerce. And nobody knew exactly what they were gonna do. And that was a, a condition that was sort of put on, on them. I think what you find is difficult is once the, the new traffic lights in or the lanes are in and you go out and do that evaluation, it's, it's very difficult to, to make, other than maybe timing improvements to a signal or something like that in the, in the post. And I think what was being mentioned too is how, who do you assign it to? Because is it background traffic because of another thing down the road that happened or where does it come from? But the one thing that Mr. Bennett that would come up is if another project comes in, their initial, their initial information they use as the base for their study is all based on counts. So, they would do traffic counts and they would evaluate the levels of service. So, that would sort of be, the next project is almost doing that post-development as their pre-development sort of for you. Is, is a way to get to that information. If nobody comes in, then it would kind of be on the township to do an evaluation. Usually, like I said, unless there's a very particular conditional use situation.
I know it's, I know it's a difficult thing to analyze and there's a lot of variables to it.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm sensitive to that fact, but I just want to be sure that we're not overbuilding. I mean, we have many, many, not to sort of get off on a tangent, but we've got a number of people who come in here looking for, looking to build warehouse spaces. And we get traffic council and trucks. Yet, we don't know who the ultimate leasing, leasur is and where, how much business they're gonna be doing. And what, what the variable would, could be on trucks in, trucks in and out. So, I just want to, it seems like we have a lot of activity right now. I just want to be able to be sure that we're managing it properly, that's all. And.
I get the idea and I applaud the idea. I just think like the actual practicality of what you're proposing here. Does any other municipality do anything like this?
I'm, I'm not aware of anyone that, that does post-evaluation on, on traffic. Not, not generally.
Nor am I.
Okay. Yeah. Like I said, typically, that, that pre-development for the next project is where you would, where you would capture that.
And we have, we've gone through a lot of development, our development's slowing now because most of our lots are built out at this point. Our infrastructure is catching up. It's behind that, but we are doing Centerville Road next. We got Warristown, Stony Battery is a planned project. We got Warristown, we got Blitz Road is a planned project. Projects will slowly catch up over time as, as we're built out.
I'd also go down to number three as well. And you know, I agree, residents' interests, you know, should be on our foremost concern. But we do have, the way in my view to address that is to make changes in our ordinance if they don't align with the residents' interest. So, for development, they have to follow what our ordinance states. If we don't like a development, then we didn't create a ordinance that was tight enough or we missed something. I mean, I think that's where we go.
Which is what we addressed with what just occurred on Nissley Road Track by moving the density up to a higher acreage level to prevent that from happening other places like Long Marietta and other places.
So.
That's an example, putting resident interest first.
I don't know, I just like, I'd look at that and I think those in the development business and specifically Michael Bryan comes to name to mind. And I just sort of think, I just don't like the way it's worded there.
Not married to any of this, you know, I'm, I'm trying to come up with some, some, some broad goals and objectives. If they're, they're my thought, that's, that's all it is. I'm, I'm not married to them. I, and I'm, I'm like you, I'm in few, I'm in favor of fewer rather than more.
Instead of having one against the other, maybe just give consideration to resident interests or concerns, which we do anyway, I think, but doesn't hurt to spell it out, maybe.
I, I've looked at, to be honest, the number, what was number two, provide review and revisions, oversight of SADO zoning and stormwater ordinances. That's where you go back to putting this stuff in. Cause there's a discussion about density or studies or whatever is required. That's where it is, because then it becomes a requirement that developer do that work. So, there's, if there's areas where our SADO and zoning ordinance is not up to snuff, that should be as, as a planning working group, that's where you flag those things. I mean, the previous planning working group, we flagged signs, that's why we went through a painful drill of updating the sign process and getting rid of the conditional uses, the way that they were worried in there. But that's, that's where you make the changes, is, is take that number that provide review, revision, oversight, the SADO zoning or stormwater ordinances, that's where you, you make the changes. And then it becomes codified as a requirement to do.
So, Tom, if we did that, like the original number two and just put a comma there and aligning with resident interest, would you be happy with that?
Sure. Also, yeah.
I guess the, the question in my mind is where does the decision come from how we are going to or who we entertain for a project? And once upon a time in East Hemfield Township, when something came before the planning commission that didn't fit in with the neighborhood, it got stopped. It didn't go ahead, it got changed. And it seems today that we don't have that ability to decide what's right for the interest of the whole township in the long run. There's the question, and I don't know if this committee has that authority and has had that authority, but I think that's the question.
Well, I think to what we were just speaking about, Mr. LeFever, the, what stops that is our ordinance and our zoning map.
But interpretation of them, I think is something, yes, we write them, then we are the author interpreter. I just, again, I'm not sure it's this committee's authority other than to respond to a question that comes to them or if staff has somebody comes to the door, how do we manage it from there? And does this committee have authority in how we manage that to vet it or otherwise? I think this is a, a large question that we are looking at right now, but it's, it's a larger question that this board needs to address and has needed to address. I, I don't know, I, I hear us talking about it around and around and around. But we're almost developed out unless we go across 283. And if we're not gonna go across 283, we've got to be very careful what we do south of 283. And I'm not saying we haven't been trying. I just think the question is that we're dealing with here is how and where the authority lies on this question.
On the planning group? You mean with the planning group? So, we try to tackle it. The, the planning group doesn't have authority or doesn't pretend to have authority, but in a practical matter, if you're a business person and you want to do something and you, you've got to have somebody to run the idea by. So, you have two supervisors that you can have a frank discussion with, they can't promise you anything. They can give you their opinion on stuff. And you'll hear later tonight, we've had, we just had a planning group meeting and a couple people came and I think Tom's gonna speak to one of the items that's gonna come to the board just to get everybody's feedback. But I think it's a good practical way for, you know, business owners to come to us and say, look, this is what we're thinking. Are you in support of it, are you not? You know, what can we do different? You know, what do you need to see from us? And I think it provides good back and forth. It's very hard for somebody to do that in a public meeting, in a public setting like this. So, I think the group has value. I don't think they have authority like that you're talking about here, but I do think it has value for the citizens and business owners.
Well, I guess I would suggest that when it gets past that committee, then it's not only a foot in the door. It's an old front leg in the door and they're on their way. I, I, I'm serious, I think it's something we haven't managed as well. And I don't, I don't take shots at anybody who's, who's been in that seat. I just know at one time, we had a way of discouraging these things better, I think that we do now.
I think the ag holding zone actually did kind of accomplish that, because I remember back in 2007, there was talk about taking a thousand acres of ag holding and just opening it up to development all at once. And I think that really would have been, I mean, what we're talking about here, but.
If we're talking about independence?
Well, that was one, that was 300 acres, there was still another 700 that would have all been opened up for development at the same time, which that never happened. And then we had 2008 when the real estate market crashed. But I think over the last 13 years, we have been rezoning a few parcels of ag holding that we can keep up with infrastructure. So, I think in a way we have kind of done slowed development down to where we could keep up with it.
And I guess, and I, I hear what Mr. Weaver's saying, Mr. LeFever's saying, and on some level, I do, I do agree with him. But I think overall in the township, whatever the planning process has been, it's done a pretty good job and worked pretty well. I think we've come to a point in the development process in the township where because we are built out in many places, we may have to be more flexible in terms of what we allow and don't, don't allow. But I, but I think the important thing is that we're all part of the process. And maybe everyone's involved when the angle goes in rather than the whole leg. So, that's just me. So, we'll see.
Do we have a summary of the statement?
I was gonna leave that to Scott.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
Paragraph.
I think, I think we have two different visions there. I think for me, I go back to what's in the ordinance and what's on the zoning map. And when I hear, like when we say like we flexible, what's in and what's out, we legally, it's almost like, okay, Walmart wants to come in. We don't want Walmart. We want Target. We don't have that authority legally, we can't do that. So, we have to make sure that what we want is written into the ordinance. That's the only way to accomplish these things. If it's not written into the ordinance, we do not have that authority to grant flexibility. You know where I'm coming from there?
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I don't know how we solve that divide, but let's go back and take them one by one. I think item number one, I don't think anybody had a problem with, is that correct?
Yep, that's good.
Okay, item number two. I think we were gonna come, change that to keep what was there, provide review, revision, oversight of the SADO zoning ordinance, aligning with residents' interests.
Okay.
So, is that right? So, that's, that's.
Resident, and it should be property owner's interest.
Okay, property owner's interest.
We got more than just residents in the township.
Okay, property owner's interest.
That's actually number three.
So, and I think two and three should be combined.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Looking at the red version. So, I don't think anybody had a problem with meeting with the planning commission zoning hearing board. Nope, okay, we moved, working with the NPO out to Public Works, no one has an issue with that? And identify and review land south of 283 for proper zoning. I mean, I think that's an older one. I mean, it's almost like Mr. LeFever stated, has taken care of itself, there's very little left to really talk about. I don't know that there's anything that we need to do with that one. Okay, so going through that, are we good with everything? Okay.
So, number seven, leaving it there or taking it out?
Well, it became seven.
Do you see the last item that's in black there, Mr. LeFever?
Identify and review.
I would recommend you guys keep in there as a planning group, because you guys are the first ones to hear when somebody's doing a rezoning request.
Okay.
And that's, that's your, your job to relate to those applicants, whether they got a shot or not.
Okay, so we'll leave that in. Public safety.
I'm good with everything that Mr. Bennett put in. The only thing I would like to add, because we, we have a union negotiation contract, when will that start? Cause that's done by this group.
2023.
Right, but doesn't it start the fall of 2022 usually?
No, it would be the spring of 23.
Okay. So, probably you should have something in there just about monitor, review the police contract this year to get ready for next year's police contract negotiations.
Is that something you wanted in public safety or admin finance?
Public safety.
Public safety negotiates the police contract.
So, that'll be item number seven.
Number six, because item got, item five got struck.
Got you. Got you. Okay. Anything else for public safety?
I would add for number five to what Mr. Bennett had. Outlying long-term goals which strengthen Easthamfetage Fire Service and EMS services within the township. Because they both have issues.
So that was number four?
No, that would be, that would be the new number five.
Okay.
But just you're basically EMS along with fire.
Switzer, did you get that?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else for public safety? MS four, the exciting stuff. All right.
No.
Or water is, come on.
The. Stormwater, looking at this, what came to mind, we were. Involving, maybe employing even, some students from Millersville, I believe, to map all of our stormwater structures across the township. And then I think we were going to, if we didn't in that process, grade them or evaluate them. And I don't know if we ever completed that effort.
That probably predates DMA.
Yeah, there, there is a, there is an inventory of all your, your outfalls at least. And I think a vast majority of your structures are all on the inventory that's, that's kept on the CS-Datum program that you utilize. So a lot of that information is, is there. Um, we do, we do outfall inspections. We go out and we check the water coming out of the structures. To see what's, what's in those during wet and dry weather conditions to make sure there isn't anything coming out that's not supposed to. We, our office does not go out and do an evaluation of just the normal inlets and pipes within the, within the roadway. We do inspections of all of the BMPs, all the facilities that are on, that have been part of projects, stormwater basins, rain gardens, underground. We do, we do, within a five-year cycle, we'll get to all of those and physically, physically inspect all of those for you.
Okay, Mr. Feer, to answer your question, yes, that Miller show study work was done. That was before David Miller was on board. And it was done under the RV and Michael Sawa.
Yeah, it's been a while ago.
So looking at MS four, was there anything that, that we wanted to add to that or, or change? Mr. Weaver?
I think that's pretty much it.
Okay.
I think they should evaluate the Conestoga project too, at least for the MS four part of it. As that advances forward, that's going to be our, our next five years worth of credits.
I think it's going to be in the township's best interest to keep, keep a close look at that to see what potential credits there are and make sure you get. A reasonable or fair, fair portion of those. I agree.
And that's the next process and, and it'd be the next agreement, the next MLU.
Yeah, so that'd be, that'd be a good one for the MS four to kind of start running with that one.
Okay.
It's going to be a big project.
So Mr. Fever and Mr. Weaver, you guys up for that?
Made on. We got four things there, so.
All right.
Handle one more.
I like it. All right, Public Works. Okay.
One thing that came to mind there, it was the truck route study we were working on about a year ago. Remember that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Still around. It's still in draft form. Chief Skiles isn't ready to bring it forward yet.
Okay, and I know he's been other priorities, but.
I think that would be, that'd be a good goal to bring that back in, to make it formal so it doesn't get forgotten.
Hearing the one lady in Traffic Commission tonight sort of emphasizes the need to get that done and established.
And I do really, we've had this on the goal list now for ten years. I really would like us to do the payment management program. I know Perry's listening, so I'd really like to see us. Um, kind of formalize that at this point this year, so.
And that is number.
Number five.
Number five. All right. Anything else? Well, this was almost painless. I think we're through it. What do you think? We're good?
Perfect.
All right.
I'll finalize it and send it back out to you to make sure I caught everything.
All right. Up next, old business. We have any old business? New business, trick or treat. Another good one. Okay.
So I gotta admit, I liked the IMC policy.
The IMC had a meeting. It was pretty much unanimous to change the policy slightly. So we had October thirty-first, unless October thirty-first was on a Saturday or Sunday. IMC has now decided to make October thirty-first, no matter when it is, is trick or treat, rain or shine. So we put the, the resolution out there for consideration. I did not put it as an action item. But if the, the board supports that, I can move that to the action item list for next meeting. Or you can adopt it tonight if you want. It's just a resolution.
So it's a rain or shine policy sixty, always on October thirty-first now, so there shouldn't be any residents confusion. And if any community group wants to hold trick or treat night any other time or any other day of the week or do something different, they can. I love it. And now she said they would put the press releases out to keep the task force from gagging all of that's emails and calls.
Won't help with, yeah. Good effort.
According to Ryan Schornacker.
So we're going to stay strong when Cindy gets eighty phone calls.
I won't even ask you the question.
All right, good enough.
Old business got away from me, but how about the fence here again?
So we had a vulnerability study done by Pence or State Police. They came back with a list of vulnerabilities in the building. The fence is one of them and. We are, are working on bid specifications, take it out for bid to see how much it's going to cost.
Are we going to in-house make a sketch where we want it kind of thing?
Right, right. So we'll get the bids in and, and see where we're at. It is in the budget, so.
Okay, we don't need a design professional or?
No, no, we're not. Perry's going to be doing the sped, the specs.
But that does force the issue to get our.
Gardens.
Our gardens moved at this point. And I did throw an idea out to Cindy. Um, instead of Noel Doorwork Park, uh, for us to look at the Nissley Road Track.
And I had Perry go out and look at that. He and Mark went out to look at it. If you're standing on the track to the, the build, the driveway is there. And if you look to the left, which is where we thought might be a great place to put it, they said it's very marshy. There's trees in it. He's suggesting it going to the right side. So that the dry, a new driveway is in, in line with the existing road that is there. I can't remember what it is. Might be Harrogate.
The Church Road or Harrogate?
Harrogate, Harrogate. Um, it would take some more of the field away. But he thinks that's a better plot of ground and it's already being farmed.
And we got water.
There is water and it's actually on that side of, of the driveway.
Yes, we'd have the water tap that used to go to the house. So we're not, it's, it's going to be, and we basically have a flat level area and we're not having the train right now. Noel Door doesn't have any water. There's a lot of other issues with doing it there. This is a ready-made site for it at this point. And it'll get the residents used to some township activity occurring there for firehouse or someday, or something like that were to show up there, so. It's just an idea.
So the, the plots are already rented for this year. That, do that in February, early February. So for next year's gardens.
How big is the Nissley Road Track?
The big acre, the big piece is seventeen about and the small tract is four.
And we talked about the small track?
No.
Where the house used to be.
Where the house used to be.
It's only fighter.
And, and how much of an area does, does the gardens actually take up?
Just over half an acre.
Half an acre, okay.
Hey, literally you could plop it right on the flat area of that house. Yeah, it was about one acre. That land was flattened out for the house. So it's, it's actually, it just, I was talking to Spess Cindy about something else and it just died. You just popped in the head, why not look there? And so look at Google Map and we pulled it, a footprint from Google Map of the existing gardens. And it plopped right on top of that with everything there. You got a driveway there. So people are already used to an existing driveway, so it's got great sight distance. Um, and so you can very easily have a place for people to pull off and we got a water source for, um, water in the gardens too. So that kind of checks a lot of different blocks, not a lot of cost to move it versus having to build a bridge like we were originally looking to do. I think HYA was talking about that site, weren't they, Tom?
Yeah, they are. Well, I mean, we'll.
That would still, that would still fit, I mean. Yeah, but the issue with HYA, if HYA wants to do baseball fields, then we need to start having to talk about the sod farm. That the reason there's too much of a slope and it's going to be cost prohibitive to level that field out. Because you're going to terraced it to put baseball fields in versus we already have the sod farm. That's already leveled out and pretty much ready to go for sports fields. Gardens don't take up that much space, it sounds like. This is just, just enough flat area with where the house is, any flat area on that site. That's where the gardens would, would be, not on the steep area.
So back to trick or treat, it seems like we're all in agreement with adopting the IMC. Is that any, am I wrong on that?
One of the first times to agree with something for the IMC.
We're all good. We're all good with that. Do you need us to?
You want to do a motion? I can, we can adopt it tonight.
This is, this is like the, the greatest thing since the tattoo ordinance, uh, thing that they had worked on, so.
Okay. Do, um. Do I hear a motion to adopt the IMC? Well, I guess it's a draft form now when it comes out there, trick or treat policy.
Don't move.
The motion by Mr. LaFever is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Traffic Commission report.
Can I just sneak something in there on new business?
Sure.
I, um, Mr. Madonna, um, did we put new traffic or streetlights? LED streetlights in, something like say on Parker Drive? We got a really bright streetlight and people across the street are kind of, uh, say it's too bright. Did we put new lights in?
I, I have not seen any of the new LED lights that are being proposed yet. We signed off on that last fall and PPL, in my opinion, has drug their feet. I, I have emailed and asked questions as to where we are, but. I, I'll have to drive up there and take a look at the light. Sometimes, you know, those high-pressure sodium lights, you know, when they're on their last leg, sometimes they will get awful bright. Sorry, uh, they will get awful bright, like right before they're ready to burn out. Uh, but I'll, I'll go up and check it out, but I, I have not seen PPL install any of the new, um. Uh, LED lighting yet in the township, so.
I didn't see them installed and the neighbors didn't either, but if, it's kind of like daylight. The first time I came down my driveway, I thought, what in the world is going on here? I mean, it is. Is it actually an LED layer or is it? I think it's, it seems like it's LED. I mean, it's, it's really bright blue.
I'll go take a look tomorrow morning and to see if they installed something new there. And if not, I'll report it to PPL that it needs, uh, needs repaired.
They could put a shade or some kind of, kind of tone that down. Just, you could see it tonight if you go up there. Anyway, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, guys? Uh, Traffic Commission report. Uh, Traffic Commission, uh, we basically talked about, uh, speed humps in several different locations. Uh, we made a decision, um, and discussed a pass, path forward with Spring Valley Road. That we, uh, we're not going to move forward at this time with putting them in. We're going to send it back to the traffic engineer. Uh, take a look at what, some of the other things that we could do there. Some of them were the digital speed signs. Paint or striping the road, making any of those kinds of changes and then reevaluating. Orville Road Hump, um, as part of the Farmingdale Road Project. The temporary, uh, speed bump that was there has come out. It got, uh. Taken out by the plow. Uh, we want to put that in. If we do put it in after the road improvements have been made. We'd like to take a look at the road improvements and then go back to the property owners. That we had promised the speed hump to and make sure that they're still in favor of it before we move forward. And, um, that's going to be our course regarding Orville Road. Bar and Barcrest temporary speed bumps. Uh, we discussed whether we should, uh. Convert the temporary one to a speed hump. We decided not to. There's discussion on reevaluating that whole neighborhood once the, uh, changes are made. To Marietta and Good Drive and the project's complete. And then we heard from a resident from, actually from Westhamfield Township, um, concerned about speeding on. Stony Battery Road, Ms. Switzer had the stats handy. Um, that road was just looked at in December, um, and found to be within, uh, very close to, uh, where it needs to be. So, uh, also, uh, Chief Police indicated that their enforcement efforts. Uh, showed that the, uh, the traffic study, uh, was accurate. They did do enforcement and they had, um, uh, very little, uh, very few citations issued. And that concludes the Traffic Commission report. Managers report.
So you have a couple of things in the report that are red, mostly red let dates. They are pushing them back. Um, because of one thing or another, they just are not ready to go out for bid. So Central Road let date now is May twenty-sixth of this year. I did get an updated schedule from the JMT engineers. Looking at it and Mr. Fever analyzed it and it doesn't quite meet leaps and bound or meets and bounds. So I went back to them and asked for clarification on exactly what they're talking about. Um, you acted on the reimbursement agreement this evening. Church Street paving, again, that let date has been moved now to, uh. May? No, yes, no, April, April fourteenth of twenty-two. Old Warriors Town Road Bridge, little steps at a time, uh, let date now is, uh, April twenty-eighth of this year. The Farmingdale Road Project, uh, we are hoping for a March twenty-two bid. I spoke to the chairman. He wants me to go back out to Mr. Bauer and, and encourage him to keep moving that forward. So I will get a better schedule from him, uh, hopefully by our next meeting. The Stony Battery Road Trail, uh, meeting is scheduled for February fourteenth. I think I have all but one property owner coming to that meeting, so we should be able to get all on the same page regarding the trail that's going. On Stony Battery, Noel and a little bit of Coffin. The Dairy Road Bridge, really nothing new to report. We're still working on the, the grant documents for that. And update, updated budget numbers. Um, backing up to Farmingdale, I did get updated budget numbers from that one. We're evaluating that and we can discuss those during the admin finance meeting and exactly how we're going to handle those, um, those monies. The DNCNR grant award, I'm still waiting for the documentation for that grand award, so there's nothing new there. The Wetlands Grant was submitted to the Clean Water Partners, so we're on hold there. You addressed the trick or treat for. You addressed the trick or treat for I M C, that was the hot topic of that meeting. I did want to alert you or make you aware of the West Hemphill rezoning. They are head of a developer that purchased the Q B C and they're looking at rezoning fifty acres of uh, their ag farmland to um, industrial to accommodate an expansion.
Is that north or east of Q B C?
It's on the high side.
Well, they're on the corner, Q B C is on the corner.
Yes, as you're going towards Landisville, it's on that side.
I thought that's where Murray was putting a develop, a residential. Oh.
Down by the rec center.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
This is on the north side of the existing.
I'm not sure what that road is, Meadow, Meadow Lane or something like that.
Chickies, uh, or no, maybe that's not Chickies up far, I don't know.
There's an M.
All right.
Oh, I have, actually have a map here I can show you too, that helps place it for you. So the Q B C is 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 on the lower end of the the map there and the fifty acres they want to rezone is above it. Uh, Stony Battery is going around the corner there.
Okay.
That helps.
Okay.
So it's the same farm they tried reselling about fifteen years ago. Twenty years ago.
Okay. And that's not the full farm.
That time around, it was down by the West Hemphill Board.
Thank you.
Um. So I've got a lot of group report or group meetings scheduled. We did have a planning group meeting yesterday. We listened to two developers that are interested, actually landowners that are interested in in doing some outside the box kinds of things that really our our ordinance doesn't um, help them with. And I believe the first one was twenty-five thirty-two Marietta Avenue. That one. Pull it up here. So that tract is about little over seven acres, but if you net it down to exclude the right of ways, um, it comes down to just above four acres. It is zoned. Yeah.
Yeah, low density residential.
Low density, low density residential, so it it doesn't, they wanted to put a cluster development in there. And um, they of course got uh, caught in the the pending ordinance doctrine because we adopted the new ordinance, so instead of five acres for clustered development, it's now fifteen. They realized that, but they wanted us to uh, the planning group to take a look at what they had proposed. Which technically challenged here. This is their, their very rough concept plan that they talked to the planning group about. And it's basically two singles and ten semis. And again, just conceptual, but they can't do that under the current zoning. The planning group uh, didn't really support. I don't know, I get lost now, so I'll I'll chime in.
Oh, yeah. As it was mentioned, they they're not allowed to do it by right, even under what is, would have been the previous cluster, they're under the five acres. So they would have had to go, their one option would be to go to zoning hearing board and get a variance to to allow for the change in the acreage, but to go from four something to from fifteen down to four is a pretty big ask. So then there was some other discussion of whether or not there'd be a willingness to rezone the tract to a zone that would allow for this type of development. The, the argument on the developer's part is it's a difficult piece of land because of the because of the proximity to thirty and the slope and some of the other limitations that the lot, the lot has. There is C B C, I think, zoning to the west with the church and sort of carries across. On the other side of thirty, there is a parcel that E G Stoltz Fuss is developing now with the townhouse units, that's um, like a medium density residential that would allow for something like this. Their, their request was whether or not they might, might be able to put that forward with the board to look at a change of zone for that, for that parcel. So again, their options would be zoning hearing board to get relief from fifteen down to four and change, or have it rezoned. Or w- we did ask them what they could do by right. Uh, there, they were going to provide a sketch that maybe shows that we haven't seen that yet. Um, I believe it might be a couple of single family houses they could put on. There are some fairly significant limitations with access to to Marietta Avenue, especially as you go east towards the bridge that I don't know that you could get a driveway up up there for single, so practically maybe you could horizontally chop off so many single lots, but I don't think you could, I don't think you could develop them, them all, especially as you go to the east.
So you want to have a discussion of the board to see your thoughts?
But, you know, I think uh, I think generally, uh, refer to, refer to my notes, I think I think there's five, there's five duplex homes, so for a total, I think we're looking at twelve units, is that right? Um, uh, again, we've got the uh, the acreage right, um, it's single act access in from Marietta Avenue. You know, just in my mind, some, some positives, uh, it's unlikely to have a significant impact on traffic in Marietta, obviously. Um, and there's uh, plenty of area for stormwater. As I see it, I mean, I think everybody here knows I'm not generally in favor of clusters. Uh, but I think this particular one in this particular spot um, uh, would 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 work. You know, we'd have to work with the applicant. But again, I'd point out that generally it would have a a low impact on neighboring residences, businesses, businesses on Marietta. And the land use, as I viewed it, is consistent with things that are going on around them. You know, they've got apartments, they've got condominiums uh, going up close by. There's, there's probably only eight or ten residences across the street, which is our one. Uh, so I don't see a significant impact there, so um, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to see us work with them to to uh, to accomplish what they're looking for, if 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 we can, we can do it reasonably, reasonably, I was, you know, we talked about this in planning and uh, the change to R two, uh, you know, might allow them to do that, so um, you know. That's about, that's about it, I think um, see if I have anything else here from a note standpoint. No, I think that, I think that's, that's, that's good.
So in tech, I mean, I'll chime in as well, I mean, it is a challenging site, I do think it backs up to Route thirty. Um, I do think it would have a limited impact on neighbors and, you know, I could be for it. The one thing, I mean, I think the cluster development's out of play because we changed the ordinance, so it would take a rezoning to R two. The one thing that we all have to keep in mind is you rezone it to R two, no matter what's shown there. Um, it could change down the road or whatever to, you know, be something different than what it is now, but I think I could, for me, I support the concept, I I would be willing to entertain it.
What, since I was the only one that was on the board when Nardo came in, that's still here. What was Nardo proposing along the front of of Marietta?
I think there was concern that the front of Marietta matched what's across the street.
Right, we, and we put conditions on the rezoning that were pretty strict. Because we had a, so he, we further restricted what he could do within the zoning. I think it's R two along the front of Marietta, am I correct or incorrect at this point?
I know we looked at that.
Yeah, we did look at that.
I know we've allowed precedent on this before, but there's only one access to that site. Which is not desirable.
That's a long cul-de-sac.
They, they would need some probably relief of the cul-de-sac length, we talked to them about some options of maybe trying to align the driveway with the street on the others, on the north side or or some different options, they could potentially have two access points, one at the existing driveway where they're showing now and and maybe one to the east, they start to get close until you run out of room to move to the east and still access the roadway without too much of a slope.
The remote possibility, but still a possibility is that the one X gets blocked and there's a emergency. So.
Had that with uh, development on Elmwood Avenue or?
The one, yeah, the one right, right next door, we did that.
Yeah.
Although they could drive over the park ground, it it could get in if they had a problem there. I don't think you'd get into this one quite as easily.
You?
So yeah, I don't know if they could get an access easement or anything from the church. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, uh.
There's some grade between the church property at the ball field over the hill.
Right.
Yeah.
Russell talked about possibly a connection at Pin Oak, right?
Right.
Intersection there.
Or or, yeah, where the, where the most ideal location for the main access would be, and then you could look at the potential for for something being emergency access that wouldn't be used on a day to day by the, by the residents, but could still be used by the fire department if you needed to. The sketch, the sketch plan did show some open frontage, I think the houses were all on the were all on the bottom side of the proposed roadway or on the south side. Yeah, the slope does, a- as you go east, the slope gets worse and worse. So uh, an emergency access would almost have to be right on the other side of that, I think it was that L shaped building, it's like a pole building, I believe.
But what we're looking at right now, that is not possible by zoning, even if it's R two.
Be a better site for a cemetery.
We would. He, it's could they give, that was R two right now.
Then you'd get a lot of occupancy.
We talked to the developer about options of of what other zones could be looked at for that, and we thought that since it was R two across thirty, that it it wouldn't fall into that spot zoning consideration as much because you do have at least have an technically adjoining zone for that, so R two is what we had suggested, whether they could do this full sketch or not, I don't uh, we we didn't, we didn't advance the discussion that far and that would be, I think, more on the applicant to come back with what they can do with 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 that, but it would allow them this unit, more this unit type and and more density than what, than what they're allowed now.
So I think they're looking for feedback from us, think they don't want to go tilting at windmills or chasing rabbits. So, you know.
Uh, I'm, I'm the one that went through Nardo, I can just say it wasn't a pleasant experience. I, I think if we do do a rezoning request, I would like to kind of see uh, some conditions put on it like we've done with our other rezoning requests that Nardo did, Mike O'Brien did over the years. Where we have uh, conditions that are deed restricted on the rezoning. Uh, that restrict what could further restrict what can be done.
So to codify what we're going to send back to them, is it is there anybody that's outright opposed to it off the top of their head?
I just want to know they're willing to work with us. If it, if it's going to be a hostile like the Nistley Road Track, then no deal from me for rezoning. If they're going to be more like Mike O'Brien, then it's, I'm open to rezoning discussions.
I do believe that's what you're going to get. You know, the app, the applicant is a East Hemphill resident, business owner, he's been in the township for uh, many years. He's uh, grown his business here. And I think will act in the best interest of the uh, township and the East Hemphill community, so. I don't believe we'll have an issue. But we're obviously going to codify anything.
I'm open to discussion.
Okay.
Andy, what do you think?
Uh, it's infill, well, the only issue I think is the access with that cul-de-sac, but I mean, did let Elmwood do something similar, although was Mr. LaFever said, they do still have an access, sort of. But, I mean, that's the only sticking point I would see.
Mr. LaFever?
Well, I I still say I don't like one access, particularly this one that looks like it really wouldn't serve a second, even an emergency access, so. I'm at losses to what they could do differently other than my suggestion, so.
So we have one suggestion for a cemetery.
Who knows, they might take it.
Four uh, four possibilities, uh, I guess you could, maybe when we get back to them, Scott is uh, to see if they have any thoughts on, you know, an emergency access. You know, maybe they could come up with something and and satisfy. I don't know if they can or not, but, you know, maybe let them know that was a concern.
May- maybe a revised sketch that would be allowable within the R two zone that also incorporates the required secondary access, at least an emergency access point.
And Mr. Russell also mentioned about, I don't know what those deed restrictions were for Nardo, but something along those lines.
It'd be good for us to share the Nardo access, or the Nardo covenant so everybody can be aware of what the the residents along there were promised last time that occurred with our T zoning.
Would you want that to go to the developer at this time?
I don't know.
They had discussions on what the appearances need to be for the buildings, how they were frying the road. Those were all kind of promises that were raised to the residents at the time.
I think, yeah, it gives them guidance, that's what they were looking for, right, Mr. Bennett?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the process.
So the other person, uh, prop owner that we had a discussion with was for thirty ninety Harrisburg Pike, always never done. And that, this is very uh, conceptual at this point, we talked to their attorney and and he's going to look at um, different options in terms of potential rezoning of that property to allow them to expand their small business.
What is that and where is that?
It's the old Ada Bud, you know, right, right where Mike is, or the uh, the new nursery.
Right.
The gas station.
Okay.
The building right behind it, right off of Harrisburg.
Okay. They like the, the former pottery place or whatever, okay.
Yeah.
Just by way of a li- a little background, just what I know about, uh, it's a two or three uh, ladies went in there and and uh, uh, opened up a shop. Uh, basically, it's a home goods type of shop, they've done a great job with it, I I'd encourage you to go in and uh, take a look at what they've done, uh, they'd like to expand uh, you know, generally, and they need some create, they're probably going to need some creative approach to the uh, process.
But not to put work on the planning group, uh, but Harrisburg Pike and Marietta Pike both need to have a little creative thought about how we have a lot of non-conforming businesses along there that were all there that predate zoning.
So as, not to interrupt, but as Scott, Scott is um, Dwight Yoder who was representing them went on, he kind of, I think, talked himself into the track that uh, we gave him for, is it Rindazo's pizzas? Um, where they came up with a list of um, uses that they would take to the zoning hearing board and something that we could agree to, maybe issuing a letter of support. Um, like we did in that case, rather than a rezoning.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking just from a big picture, I don't have any problem with the emergency relief for these, these individuals. But we got pantry, we got a whole bunch of businesses that all predate zoning along, but Harrisburg Pike Quarter, and this is one of the properties. But we got pantry, we got a whole bunch of businesses that all predate zoning along, both Harrisburg Pike corridor, this is one of the properties, and along Marietta. And we really should have some sort of flexible zoning for those, non-residential, but they've been businesses the whole time, they've been there. So that each time they're as a business, they have to do something, they don't have to always go to the zoning hearing board.
So would that be another zoning classification, or?
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm kind of looking at Scott to see where, I know, at one time before, um, uh, our former planning director, now West Temfield Township manager, was talking about something that, uh, one of his York municipalities had done, that kind of put a little bit more flexibility on one of these old corridors that, were built long before there was zoning. Uh, so that businesses that were already there in particular, weren't having to constantly get zoning approvals like these ladies were talking about, just to do basic things. So it'd be, if, as we're looking to try and make improvements to our ordinance and be friendly, especially to our existing local businesses, that would be something to think about. Uh, especially when they're in a business that's been there at that location for 50-plus years. Uh, so, and we have a number of them, you can go up and down the corridor, and Harrisburg Pike and Marietta Avenue, you can throw Columbia Avenue into, in some locations, so. All three of those have very old corridors that have a lot of stuff that predates all our zoning.
So then we would be looking at like a blanket change along the corridor?
Just, I, I, I know, I can't remember, I know the Springusberry or one of the townships in York, Andrew Stern would, be actually a good reference to talk to about that, because that was actually something you used to think about doing before you jumped ship.
We can do some research on that and, and see, see what, what that one is in particular. One of the big things we talked about at the planning group was the, the unintended consequences of making these changes and, having to think three steps ahead of what, of what you might do with, with zoning changes and, and what that might do to the corridor, if you, if you make these changes, because as we looked at it, there was some discussion about, should there be a CBC or some, something extended along this corridor? You still have houses mixed in with the businesses, and it was, it's, I agree, I think something to look at, but it could be delicate as you, as you go through that process.
Okay, and it could even be done like an overlay zone, for, for an existing use to fall into that overlay zone. And you could be very, very specific about grandfather and what actually gets into it.
Yeah. Yeah, applying one of your other zones to it would definitely open it up to be potentially much more than what it is, what it is now, even one of the village zones, we can do some brainstorming and come back with some, some ideas to discuss.
I think Tom and I felt, and I think the Planning Commission members did too, that we wanted to help them as much as we could, so.
We want, I want to see all those little, those type of businesses succeed, they're all, you know, they're what makes East Temfield, East Temple.
Okay.
So just a little bit of planning report, uh, the signed ordinance amendment, I did get the draft ordinance now as of today, so I'll be distributing that to the board and to, the Planning Commission and being submitted to Aclister County Planning Commission, so that's on its way. The U-Haul rezoning will be, or the U-Haul zoning text amendment will be on your, uh, next board meeting agenda. The South Chickies, uh, was at the Planning Commission, uh, last Wednesday, they'll be on your 316 board agenda. There were a number of property owners at that meeting, nobody was wild and crazy, they did have concerns regarding wildlife, losing open space, um, potential artifacts in, in and around. So it was generally a very good discussion of the, of the people that were there with the Planning Commission, so I think they got their voices heard.
They did also reach out to, um, the leader France.
Yes.
And my understanding is they had a very productive and, uh, very good meeting with them as well, so they are, doing their, um, due diligence to meet out, to meet with neighbors and, take care of answering those kinds of questions that they would have, so.
Are they, are they taking over the grant? For the interchange?
They haven't mentioned anything about it, I, I don't know that that's really on their radar totally yet, until they get the zoning approved. We did talk to them about it, they are aware of it, and that he's interested in getting rid of it.
It'd be, that would probably behoove them concerned what they're going to get hit with on the interchange, so.
Well, they changed the entrance, right? It's not coming in off of, they're going to come in off of South Chickies now.
Coming in off of South Chickies, but they still have to do improvements to the interchanges.
Okay.
At least the one, and they offered both, yeah.
Signaling both.
And are they looking at what they got to do for the, the Lego South Chickies, where they're going to be running trucks? Or are they going to be running trucks all off of Spooky Knook now?
Just that so- short section there on South Chickies, they're going to have to improve.
Upgrade that to, to be able to handle trucks, in terms of pavement.
The, the trucks would come in on South Chickies just west of, uh, Spooky Knook. There was a, there was a proposed on the concept plan, a proposed access for passenger vehicles, I think for like employees to come in, a little bit farther west, but the trucks would not be going, would not be going very far off of Spooky Knook.
So the Wendy's Concept Plan for State Road, we're still waiting for a submission, so I don't know if they changed their mind or what they're doing. Uh, we also are getting a sketch plan, or we have a sketch plan for the sheets at Florrie Mill and Roy's Town Road. That'll be on, hopefully, your 316 agenda. Woodcrest Villas is continuing to fill in, um, vacant spaces on their master plan, their latest one is a 35-unit building on the campus. The last one I wanted to talk to, talk to you about is the Stoner Farm. We had a meeting with, uh, Mr. Stoner and his son to talk about, I can't do two things at once anymore, one at a time. Talk about his farm. And currently, it is, uh, he, he does balch, and he does wood yard waste. And he is a very important component to the township's leaf disposal program. I don't have the other print, but essentially he has a permit from DEP for five acres of ground. He's exceeded that as time passed. He is now seeking a permit from BP for 15 acres for use of his farm. And, um, lost my train of thought. There's a 90-foot buffer, there, there's a 300-foot buffer required by DP, he's going to have to go back to DP and ask for a waiver of that. It's also a, a waiver from our zoning ordinance as well, so he's going to be looking for the township for possible support, to allow him to do this expansion. And the gray area to the east is area that he really has now pulled back. He had, had at one point his balch line to the property line, but he's pulled that back over the years. So he's got a 90-foot buffer, but he's required to have a 300-foot buffer, which is that other black line kind of further in there. So I, I show the, show you this, there's nothing really to do or, or act on, but he is working through the process and hopefully will be back before us to ask us for some assistance and support.
So for the, is, it's an ag holding, right?
Yes.
In terms of the relief, so that's actually one where we, we could give some tax relief, it doesn't really have too much of an impact on the rest of the township. For that one part where you're talking about some of his zoning issues up there, township driven.
It, I mean, that's one way of approaching it, yes, you wouldn't have to go to the zoning hearing board.
Right, yeah, we're not done zoning here, but we're going to talk, when you have a couple ag holding lands left, and quite frankly, anything that we do to make, ag holding more business-friendly is less chance it's going to get rezoned to something else by a property owner, so. We, if we want to keep those being farm agribusinesses, then we need to support them as agribusinesses.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
That's a, that seemed like a pretty easy one, it doesn't have bad ramifications. We lighten up on a little bit on our ag holding zoning requirements.
Might be a few upset neighbors, but he, he was there first, and.
I, I talked, I did door-to-door through that whole community, they love the farm. They, they, they know the other option, what could go there besides the farm, so.
Good.
If we, if it gets presented correctly that this is going to keep the Stoner Farm farming and operating, you're going to, the EG Stoltz's development next door will be just fine. I'm confident that they want to see it staying a farm. It'll just get misunderstood when they hear, the last time he went in, people thought he was selling the farm, and that's when everything blew up on next door. So, and he always was doing was just trying to get zoning relief.
So it rezoned to ag? I don't know.
I think, you're, with Mr. Russell, were you saying to change the, the allowable's within the ag holding to?
What relief, whatever relief he needs to run an ag business and ag holding.
Right now, this, this particular use is only an accessory to ag, and he would be well over the allowable size for an accessory belonging to ag, so you would need to add into the ag holding, this is allowable use, and then not have the, and I guess maybe specify a 90-foot buffer, I mean, you could, you could customize it within that, but you'd have to add this as a use and then add some criteria for that use within the ag, within the ag holding.
Which is.
I mean, it seems like the use would go right along with ag, right?
It does, yeah, and, and at some point, there was a decision made to allow it as an accessory to an ag, but the accessories, like I said, I think could only go before acres, so they, they didn't want the accessory to grow bigger than the, the primary, I mean, apparently was the goal of the old, with the old language in the ordinance, so it's not otherwise defined as a primary use anywhere, within the ordinance to have a composting facility, it's very specific, so it's not surprising he wouldn't have that, but.
It's, it'll be unique, it's only one, it's going to be an erratic holding, whatever relief we give him.
Yeah. His, his, his big hurdle right now is to get past the, the DEP permitting and whether or not they'll allow him to have, I think he was grandfathered in, I think there was another map that showed, his facility does extend over and they're, they're acknowledging some existing area, and that he's grandfathered in closer to that eastern property for a small portion, but not nearly that north and south like they, they have stated they need to have the business be viable.
I think we can play up the support that his business provides a critical service for the township, uh, provides our composting facility, which is an environmentally friendly process.
Would it help if we sent a letter of support? Should we?
We told him that we would seek that, if he needs it, we'll go after the board and, and get that for him, at this point, he hasn't asked for it.
This is something he should be involved and represented Miller with through every step of the way now. If he hasn't been advised to do that yet.
And maybe reach out and let him know that we definitely would be willing to do it, so.
Will do. Yeah, this, this map shows where he's at now. He's kind of expanded a little bit from the, into the green over the course of time, but I think he's still within the five acres there or not.
Currently, he's still over the, he's over the five, so they're sort of backwards permitting him to, to get him back into compliance. I think he might have been at seven, was it seven, or?
Yeah, he, he, he moved it out a little bit, I, I observed it the last year.
He's pulled it in some from what he even had it, but he is over the five-acre permit he's allowed. So I think the next, I think these might be sort of graduated permits, it sounds like the next one will allow him to go 15 to 15 acres.
Yeah.
This is the best form of farmland preservation.
There was an inquiry on West Petersburg that there's windows boarded up on Florrie Mill, have they pulled a permit to do any work?
That was, uh, the, the Florrie, uh, the little store, Florrie's store.
Store, you're right, in Solanga, thank you, yep.
Scary, we're.
Yep.
Seeing the same next door post.
Got it.
That's all I have.
Okay, anything else, public comment? Anybody on Zoom?
I have a question.
Sure.
Stoner is the most farm.
Yes.
What's he want to do? He owns all that, but.
No, we want him to do it, just let's get, let's get it clear, we want him to do it, we don't want to stop him from doing it. What he's doing now, his farm operation, his mulching.
He needs a DOP permit to expand, period. That's what he needs. He needs a permit from DOP, D E P to expand, he wants our support, that's it. He needs, he needs a permit for larger area.
Okay. You guys just keep talking, I don't understand what you're even saying. It's just like muffled jumbo.
Well, we're trying, we wanted to make sure you understood what we were saying, we are supporting him.
Okay, but I mean, that's just one example. Like, we're just trying to develop, say where it is, you say here's 30, here's Marietta, where is it?
It's at 30 and Marietta Avenue, that's where it's at.
It's on the agenda. That's 2532.
Yes, yes.
2532 Marietta Avenue. It's between, across the street from Pin Oak.
Pin Oak?
Yes.
Which is why.
Off of Marietta. Yes.
All right, any other public comment? None, okay. All right, hearing none. It is 9:02, and before we adjourn, I'd like to call an executive session for an employee matter, so when we adjourn the public meeting, we will head into executive session, and we will not return, thank you.
I am.
Not sure.
You aware of this, we're going to send anybody to that.
Yes, our zoning officer and a member of our planning commission's attending.